Hello, welcome to Cross Currents produced by the City of Fort Collins with the League of, the Larimer County League of Women Voters. I'm Barbara Rutstein, the moderator for today's program. The views expressed on this program are solely those of the participants and do not necessarily reflect the views of the City of Fort Collins, Fort Collins Television, or the Larimer County League of Women Voters. Our topic today is a full-time city council. Do we need this? In the fall of 2018, a citizens group circulated petitions to raise salaries of council members and the mayor. The initiative gathered enough valid signatures to qualify for the city election which takes place on April 2nd. Under the current pay scale, the mayor earns $15,168 a year and council members earn $10,104. Under the city initiative, the city charter would be changed on April 2nd of this year to show the following: "The council compensation shall be offered to all council members and the mayor equal to the Fort Collins median household income plus benefits afforded to full-time exempted city employees." A memo from the city estimates the cost would be between $74,397 and $78,438. The total cost of salaries and benefits would come close to $550,000 a year. Our panel will discuss why they think a significant salary increase is good or bad and whether Fort Collins needs a full-time city council. On my right is Dakota Sharette, Field Manager for Community for Sustainable Energy. On his right is John Strayer, Professor Emeritus from Colorado State University. On his right is Claire Myers, Citizen Activist, and on her right is Susan Kirkpatrick, former Fort Collins Mayor. Welcome to you and to our studio and viewing audiences. Let's begin with some background. Dakota, what prompted your group to circulate petitions to increase council salaries?
I just want to thank the League of Women Voters and the City of Fort Collins for having us on today. This initiative has been in the works for years. We were discussing the issue with various activists and community enthusiasts as early as 2016, and in 2017, we circulated a citywide survey to gain insight on the public support and to help craft the ballot language. The survey found that 54% of Fort Collinsers believe that council should be compensated at the area median income, which is what we have set, and by contrast, only 15% supported the current rate. 70% agreed that council members should be required to report any and all of their council-related activities, and by contrast, only 1% supported the current reporting requirements. So I want to make it clear that, and it's important to understand that this initiative, that this initiative is a citizen-initiated amendment. It represents the views and concerns of the citizens of Fort Collins.
Now, I have to stop you a minute because I consider myself a concerned and active citizen, and I have never heard of this until maybe October. Now, I was gone in the month of August, but I never read anything about it. What about you two? Have you heard? Did you, was it a surprise to you too?
I've heard of this kind of suggestion for many years, not this particular element, the way it was described in this way. I was unaware of any sort of survey or, I'm not sure where the survey took place, was a telephone survey or was it in front of the library or how did it take place? So, but I was aware that there was some interest in this.
Okay, can you answer?
Yeah, the survey was done through door-to-door canvassing. I believe the survey had over 1,000 participants, but it is worth noting that all these participants were, will answer the door, talk to us, and participate in the survey.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I hadn't heard of it.
You had?
I had not, no.
Okay.
It was a surprise to me. Frankly, I got a phone call and asked if I would be interested in discussing it like I'm doing here, and I said, "Discussing what?" And they said, "Well, this thing's going to be on the ballot." And so, so here I am, but no, I had not, I had not heard of it before.
Okay, so, we don't know, did it have much coverage in the newspaper?
There are a few articles posted in the Colorado in, I believe in September and October and August, correct, August.
Uh huh.
So, we had some attention from the media back then, and I think we had a total of four different articles posted in the Colorado about the issue. And clearly, some people knew what it was. We had to, we talked with over 10,000 people when we were gathering the signatures, and all those people knew who it was.
Okay, very good. Okay, let's go on now. John, do you think the salaries are in line with other cities in northern Colorado?
Right now, they're, they're in the range generally of cities in Colorado and beyond Colorado. Perhaps a little bit low, given the size of the city. $10,000 is, is on the low side. You know, I've, I've got some numbers here, I think the others will as well. Iowa City, $11,900 bucks. Charleston, South Carolina, $17,500. Columbia, South Carolina, $13,350. Pueblo, just under $24,000. Grand Junction, $24,000. Greeley, $1,000 a month, and so forth. So, you know, we're, Utah averages about $10,000. $40,000 in Salt Lake City, which is larger than this city. So, you know, if you bracket it broadly, we're, we're in the range of comparable cities a bit on the low side.
At the current rate?
At the current, at the current, at the current rate.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so to put that into perspective, you look at per capita for like comparable cities like Lakewood and Arvada. Their compensation package is for council is twice that of Fort Collins currently. And then if you look at-
No, no, 18,000.
Per capita.
Oh, per capita.
Yeah.
But it's 18,000 for the mayor and 13,800 for the council.
Yeah, for, yeah, you have Arvada there. But I don't think that we should be sitting here to compare ourselves to other cities. I can show you cases where it's worked in cities just as much as you could cherry pick cases where it hasn't worked. What we really should do, be doing is remembering that Fort Collins has always prided ourselves in being a leader in innovation and, and a leader in city management. And it's right there in our mission statement, it says, quote, "To provide world-class municipal services through operational excellence and a culture of innovation." We need to be talking about this community and the problems that we face here. It's hard enough to maintain the city, let it load, be the leader with the pay that we have right now.
Okay, yes, Susan.
I really wonder what problem we're trying to solve. That's really the fundamental question for me. I agree that the level of compensation can be debated compared city to city. I mean, but the problem is not clear to me. What is the problem? Why, well, I mean, there, there are either problems with recruiting candidates to serve or problems with people being able to serve adequately. I don't think we have any evidence that our city has not been able to produce candidates who are qualified or willing to serve and that they're at, at any hardship as a consequence of service.
Okay, Claire?
So, I would like to point out that our current city council, everybody there sits above area median income and nobody in our council is currently a renter, and those groups are more than 50, or are 50% of the current community and they're not being represented today. So I think we're looking to open the door to those people. That also includes people in the private sector who can't necessarily afford to take the pay cut to serve on city council. So that's what we're looking to bridge that gap.
I can see the renter question, but is that a qualification for council candidacy then? You're expecting to have someone, at least one person, be a renter in order to serve successfully? I mean, that, if that's a problem, and I agree it could be, that seems like not the correct way to go about it to raise the compensation for council.
Yeah, so the main thing to remember about this initiative, it's all about opportunity. We want to create opportunities for various people in town to be able to run for council. The current charter and the compensation package that they have right now is restrictive in nature. The current pay scale of about $10,000 a year for people on council requires that prospective candidates either, one, be independently wealthy so as to offset the rising costs of living here in Fort Collins, or two, that they work a second job so as to, so as to impact their productivity.
Well, wait a minute now.
And that's not, yeah.
You're assuming that it's a full-time job, and then one of the questions that we will discuss or we need to discuss, is it a full-time job? And so, that is, I think, important. And when do most of the activities of the council take place? Is it during the day? Is it at night? Is, what is involved here that requires a full-time job?
So, city council responsibilities run deep and wide. They pass a biennial budget in excess of $1 billion. They preside over hearings for multimillion-dollar projects, and they address local issues like deciding on backyard fireplaces and neighborhood nuisance concerns. They really guide Fort Collins to be a global leader in economics, economic, social, and environmental sustainability, and when people aren't happy, it's council that gets the earful. These are the responsibilities that they have currently, and those responsibilities aren't going to change. In essence, I actually can take for reference the industry median income for a position on a board of directors for a organization the same size of Fort Collins. The median income for that person in the private sector would be about $250,000.
Yes, 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 but we have a city manager, you're forgetting that. Yes.
Yeah, and the other point is, we in Fort Collins have a long history of volunteers who serve in decision-making responsibilities with very large budgets. The school board, for example, I served for eight years on the Pooter Valley Health System Board, not compensated. I served on the Fort Collins City Council for seven years. I had a compensation for that, which was a, a good thing. I also had a job during the time, and it was rare that someone sat on the city council at any time where they are not also employed, and that's one of the beauties of our system. We have a city manager, we have a history of volunteers who are willing to work on behalf of the community. Our youth sports people work day after day without compensation. I mean, these are, that's the culture of our community, and there are renters who serve in those capacities too. It's just outside the history and the tradition of our, of our community.
Well, when is, when does the council meet? It meets in the evenings, right?
Yes.
And when do more, most boards and commissions meet?
Late afternoons or evenings.
Uh huh.
Have you guys served on boards and commissions?
I've not.
No. Because I just recently finished on the parking board and we met at 5:00 PM. I went to my regular job, I worked 60 hours a week, and then I went to my job. I mean, we have this tradition of volunteering our, our service.
I would say that, that's, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, the, the question for me when I looked at that and read it is, do we want to trigger a fundamental change in the way the city's governed? Because you're, I don't mean this facetiously, but I, I think if you start paying a compensation package between $70,000 and $80,000 a year, you're going to get people who, for whom that is a full-time job. And if you have a full-time job, you're going to want an office and you're going on a staff. And if you want a staff, you're probably going to double the cost of this enterprise, and you're probably going to have seven mini-managers helping the city manager in this building and in and out of it a lot. Now, that is, doesn't have to happen right away, but I am convinced that it would happen. It, it just runs counter to, to the, to the philosophy that underpins the council manager system. Now, if Fort Collins wants to abandon that, and when Fort Collins hits three-quarters of a million people, or a million, they probably ought to abandon it and go to a strong mayor system with partisan elections, or even nonpartisan elections, which are always partisan anyway, as in Chicago and Denver. But I, I think if you, if you, if you put, if you put seven people with those kinds of a compensation package, they're going to see that as their job. That's their full-time job, and that's going to change their behavior. And I would not, for me personally, I would not apply for a city manager's job in Fort Collins under those conditions.
Okay, I have another-
They wouldn't hire me anyway, but-
A funny little anecdote, but one of the questions I had was how would council members account for their time, and would it be possible for someone to keep their regular job and also do the council job? And as an aside, I think Pueblo has recently gone to a strong mayor form of government, and I think the man who is the mayor is getting $150,000 a year, and they asked him if he was going to give up his other job, and he said, "Oh, no, he was going to continue being a lawyer." And he might hire a, a city manager. So it seems to me that you don't get a professional actually unless you have a city manager, and you can't have seven city managers. You were on to say something.
Yeah, so, this kind of goes in response to both of the things that you said. Where really the most underrated and often forgot about aspect of this whole thing is the mandatory reporting of all council-related activities, and it's by far the most important function to make sure that our council members are getting, receiving fair compensation for their work. And it's also worth noting that this amendment does not require council members to work full-time, but they can accept reduced pay in that instance. But taking full compensation, taking full compensation while not putting in the appropriate effort would just be political suicide. Voters will have the ability to choose between a candidate that is willing to work part-time for partial pay and maybe a candidate who's willing to work part-time for, oops, a candidate that's working, willing to work full-time for full pay versus a candidate willing to work part-time for part pay. Does it make sense?
I know what you're saying.
Okay, yeah.
I know what you mean, I don't know it's realistic. John?
Do they keep time cards? I mean-
No. No, so, if you want to talk about the, how the, the reporting works-
That, is that in the charter amendment?
Yeah, so if you read the charter amendment, the, the language states, quote, that it would be requiring them to publicly, publicly report their council-related activities, and we left that part of the language intentionally vague. After this amendment passes by vote, our city council will determine the procedure to report all their council-related activities. And it's important that council be able to do that themselves so as they can report their activities and meet that requirement without interfering with their job. So it's unlikely that it would be a time card. When we did our, our polling, the survey that I mentioned earlier, the majority of Fort Collinsers said that they would, they would like a monthly calendar report where citizens can look back on what their council persons had done that month, that month.
Okay, and where would they find that?
City website. It'd be accessible the same way you could find, like, videos of the city council meetings.
And the emails are saved as well on the city website.
Okay. Susan, you look like you want to say something.
I, I just really would like to know more about the idea that someone could work two jobs, their council job, and like, with my business, would I say, "Oh, I'm only working 40 hours a week at my regular job and then 20 hours a week at the council job and get paid my regular job plus half salary?" So, I mean, I, I could conceivably be $120,000. This sounds to me like development of a professional politician, and in this day and age, that's the opposite direction that I think we want, our citizens want. They don't like the fact that people are in politics for the money, and that's one of the ugliest things about partisan politics is that you end up with professional politicians who are running for their job as opposed to doing the, the work for the citizens because they love the, the community.
So, we like to joke that this is about the most difficult way to go about getting a job that is area median income. Going about running for city council, you have to run, you have to get elected. So at the end of the day, I don't think we're going to get candidates who are running for the money. I also don't think, I think we should be able to trust voters to be able to pick those people out, and I think it's going to be pretty apparent if that's people's motivation. I think it'll be pretty clear if people aren't motivated by the right reasons.
And you don't think that that's an issue right now at our state and our federal levels with people? And are we currently seeing very good results as a consequence of voters choosing people who are running for the right reasons? I really question whether that's the case today.
John, you have a comment?
No, other than perhaps restate what I already said, I think you're, you're triggering a fundamental change in the way the city's going to be governed. You're, you're going to have people who are, are going to devote a lot more incrementally, maybe at the beginning, but eventually, you're going to have seven people that are going to be devoting more and more and more and more time to what's going on in the city. And they're going to want, again, they're going to want offices, they're going to want some staff, and it's going to make, create real problems for the city manager and for the administration. What kind of access are these people going to have? And they're going to have a lot of time on their hands, they're going to have access to the city staff, direct access to department heads, and, and I think the further you go down the road in creating a set, as Susan said, a set of professional full-time politicos, it's going to change the nature of the system. Now, it may be that sometime we ought to change it, but then that ought to be on the ballot, that we're going to, we're going to consider looking at something other than the council manager system.
Yeah, the, the question then I have, what would it cost for either, either of you to have a full-time city council? Would you expect someone to come in and come to an office and have a staff every day? What, what's the idea? Claire?
No, we think that the, what we're asking for is just to put the time into the job that is currently the job. We're not asking for any extra responsibilities, but to really put time into things like working with staff and working with our constituents, answering emails and letters, those important things, and also showing up to more board and commission meetings and making sure that, because they're assigned to those today, and making sure that they're actually attending those. It's just allowing the opportunity for city council members to spend the time doing that, and there's a lot of people in our community that don't have that luxury. It is a luxury, it is a privilege to have that time, and I want to make sure that that door is open to everybody. It's important to remember that all of these people still have to run, they still have to prove to their constituents that they are the best person for the job. So at the end of the day, I think it should be up to the constituents as another good example of whether or not they want a full-time representative or they want a part-time representative. That will be their choice at the end of the day, and if somebody wants to stick around on city council as a part-time person, that's part of what they're running on.
So we could have some dis- I'm sorry, no, you go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to take it back to the fact that this is a citizen-initiated amendment, and the initiative really works to put the power back into the hands of the citizens who helped craft the amendment. We don't have any reporting requirements right now, and so voters are really left in the dark by way of monitoring the success and effort of those who are serving on city council. This will allow the voters to make more well-informed decisions through, through mandatory reporting to make sure that they're holding council members accountable to the office that they serve at. It's, it's why we circulated this petition and it's why people signed it.
Okay, anybody, anyone have a comment?
I would just say that accountability that you're describing sounds so much to me like the politicians we know at the state and federal level, with the expectation that they account for all their time and show up. I mean, what, what we have right now is citizen policymakers who are compensated small amount for the time, extra time and effort. It's one of the few citizen policymaker roles in the whole community where there is any compensation. We have many people who serve in important jobs for, on behalf of the community, and they don't receive any compensation. So to put the city council at a different level, that puts them, in my view, on the path of becoming professional politicians. There are many pressures, believe me, Barbara and I both know from having served on the Fort Collins City Council, that there are many pressures that you face, not the least of which are the pressures to read quickly, and this particular issue has nothing to do with whether you're a good fast reader. There are lots of pressures to be available and accountable during the council meetings and after by phone and by email. We have that currently. And the financial pressure is one that you, you try to manage usually with a, with another job. That's our tradition here.
And the alternative that we're providing is, is designed to alleviate all the pressures that you just mentioned. So, like, when you talk about the, the readings, how you need to be a fast reader to keep up, I know that the weekly briefings can exceed 900 pages, and we know when we have city council meetings, it's apparent that they don't read the full, the full packets. We want to provide them with the resources to be able to keep up with what city staff has provided for them.
So, so you might have one district, somebody works 10 hours, and another district, the council member works 20 hours, and another district, the council member works 100 hours, and they're going to catalog all that stuff, and that's going to be on a website? You're going to-
Correct.
And if so, are you, are you assuming that the more hours they put in, the, the better representation people are getting? I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to sort out in my head what, how this thing's going to work.
So that's, this, like I mentioned earlier, this is designed to, to open up the position to more people to have a more representative city council, and that's why we don't require them to work full-time. They're able to choose how much they work based on their personal circumstances, because we don't want to just shift who's disenfranchised. We don't want to shift from people who have lower incomes being disenfranchised from running to only people who have the time commitment. So that's why it's written that way, and that's why the mandatory reporting is so important, so that voters can look at what their council people are doing and make the judgment if the pay that's been allocated to them is appropriate.
But, but doesn't it seem as though it would change fundamentally the way in which we, within the City of Fort Collins, approach the decisions about our community? The council has traditionally been a policymaking body with a broad view assisted by a professional staff with a city manager. To have the format that you have like in Denver where they have full-time council members, big staffs, they do all of the planning and zoning, that's now in the hands of our Planning and Zoning Board. Would we get rid of our Planning and Zoning Board so that the city council would take on that responsibility? They'd have more time to do it, but not everybody on the council might have that time. It sounds like kind of a mess.
Okay, any other comments on that one? One of the things that I was going to say is that if we have a full-time city council, will that not have the possibility of eliminating a lot of people who already serve and want to serve and can fit that into their schedule? So that you would have the reverse. People who want a full-time city council would in fact just do that and possibly interfere with city staff, or you could have people as we have now who managed to fit it, fit it into their schedule, and it seems to me you might disenfranchise as many people as you enfranchise if that's the way you want to look at it.
So, I don't think I got that.
Well, yes, I mean, suppose somebody has the time to do the job, and, and they don't want to do it full-time.
Right, then that's what they're running on, so in that situation, they would be accepting partial pay.
Why, does it say that?
Well, yes, it's the same thing as the benefits, they don't have to accept any of this, it's just an option. This is not saying that they, this is the amount that you get if you are on city council, it's flexible.
We, we have people on council right now that commit 40 hours a week to the $10,000 that they're earning right now, and then we have people on council that are working just a few hours a week. The purpose of this is that the people who are willing to put, go all in and work full-time, that they would be fairly compensated for that. that they would be fairly compensated for that, so that we can have a more, I, I don't understand why you don't want a professional city council. We should have a city council who has, understands the issues, because we have 2,400 city employees in town, and we pay every one of them. And then when the city council, the people who make all the decisions that govern what life is going to look like here in Fort Collins, those people don't get paid. And I just don't understand how that makes sense.
Well, it's a policy versus administration difference. And when I was both on council and as mayor, I was delighted that when the pothole appeared in front of my house, that my neighbors didn't call me, that they called the, the city staff that was compensated for their skill and, and expertise. I provided input with regard to the broad budget. I, I came to city council as a 36-year-old, knowing a lot about political science, but not a lot about all of the things like storm drainage. And I learned so much, and it was a wonderful volunteer opportunity. It was not a job. I had a job. And so I was able to volunteer my time, compensated a little bit. I was not a wealthy person. I worked extremely hard, but I didn't need to know all about how to, to patch the sidewalks, and I didn't need to have all of the special skills to do traffic flow. That's what we pay people for.
Yeah, so...
So I didn't need to do that, and council members don't need to do that either, and I don't need to demonstrate that ability to, to make the, the traffic lights work right.
We totally agree.
Yeah, we, we agree. We're not changing that function. You mentioned earlier how city council acts as a legislative body, and then we have a city, city manager and staff that are our executive branch per se. Both of those should be functioning highly. It shouldn't, we shouldn't have a highly functioning executive and then a legislative body that isn't committing their full resources to making the right decisions.
And that's where I don't think you have evidence that it exists, that it, that the city council is not performing in an excellent way.
So we're...
I think we have a question in the audience. Is that correct? Whoever has the microphone, if you would give your name and ask your question, if you want to direct it to one person is fine, then I'll let everyone answer.
Okay, so I have a, a couple of questions. First of all, for each person on the panel, and if you don't feel like answering this, or my name is Nick, but if you don't feel like answering this, that's, that's definitely fine. But I guess, show of hands, who's below median area income at the moment?
Individually?
Individually. Okay, and who's above?
You have to answer that.
Okay, you don't have to answer that, but...
I don't know what the question is.
So my follow-up question specifically for Susan...
Who makes less than 70, 75,000? Is that your question?
Uh, 50,000.
Who makes less than $50,000 a year?
Um, and so I'm, I'm also on that list. When you look at people that are in Fort Collins and you look at the, the majority of students, renters, and people that aren't currently represented on the student council, most of those people are working nights. Most of those people are in the service industry and are putting their time in while the council is working. There's a misrepresentation there because there aren't morning meetings. I think personally, my question, I guess for, for Claire is, would this open the opportunity for, for anybody in the entire city to run?
Right, that's, that's the idea, is that we're, there's things that we're not considering. It's things like childcare. And Kristen Stevens, a current city council member, has stated that considering in the last four years, if she had to put all, all the hours that she's put into this, if she had to find a babysitter for all those hours, she couldn't do it for the current pay that she's receiving. And she's not alone. And there are so many people out there that are in that boat, and they are not being represented. And that's our goal. It's not to say that that should be our only representation, but it should be considered, and it should be an opportunity. And if that's not happening, there's a gap.
Okay, any other comments? Any other questions in the audience? One in the back?
My name is Diane, and I have two questions. One is that council pay and the mayor's pay, I believe, is set by ordinance today. And it could be increased by a small amount or some amount. And my question to the panel is, why not let that be known and ask that the pay be adjusted by ordinance rather than by a charter amendment? And then my second question is, when you talk about council members reporting their activities in their calendar, how does reporting activities to, on a calendar equate to seeing results in city operations?
I'll take both of those.
Okay.
Sorry, first one again. My first outpouring.
Why not do it by ordinance?
Oh, yeah, so it does take a city charter amendment to change their pay. So that's the reason it hasn't changed in the last 20 years.
The, the pay is written into the city charter.
No, it's not.
No, it's by ordinance.
It is definitely written by ordinance.
Ordinances are adjusted by the city council. The rate of pay for council members and mayor today is set by ordinance. So someone could go in and citizen could recommend that the pay be increased by 10% or a certain amount, because that is set by ordinance, and the ordinance, it does not have to be set by charter.
So that hasn't happened in the last 20 years? So I guess that's my question. If, if that's, it's as easy as it is, then why hasn't that occurred in the last 20 years?
It's, it's, the pay for city council is written into the charter.
It is.
And it, and it details the, the pay, the monthly pay for each month, and then it accounts for inflation. That's written into the city charter.
Okay.
And then what was the, what was the second question?
Is that right? I'm not sure. I did look at the ordinance.
Yeah. The other thing was the time, like putting in the, the calendar.
Increases, I think, based on cost of living or some...
So it, it increases with inflation.
With inflation, okay.
And, and...
That's how we have this funny number.
And that's the reason, that's the reason why we had to go about and do a charter amendment. You can't amend the charter if the pay isn't written into the charter. So it's in the charter.
You could do it by ordinance. You could just change the ordinance. You would have to bring it to the council, and they would vote on it. Because I think that it's by ordinance.
You have to have a vote.
I looked it up, but I didn't copy it.
Everybody can go look, everybody can go look it up afterwards.
Do we have a ordinance number or...
I don't know if it has. I mean, I think it's adjusted, as Dakota mentioned, every year. I think the charter says that the council can be paid, but the pay rates are set by ordinance.
It's, it's set by charter. And but the, yeah, although, the only thing that does change year to year is inflation. And that's why it has stayed the same, almost the same year to year.
Okay, what was the other question?
The other question is that it seems that the accountability is equated to making sure that citizens now know what the activities that the council have been doing, that that equates to the accountability. But I would like to know how keeping track of calendar activities equates to obtaining results for city services.
I think the biggest piece of that is time, the amount of time you're putting into the research and the amount of time you're putting into reading those 900 pages for city council members. And meeting with constituents is a big piece of that, too. So that's why putting it in the calendar and showing that you're putting that effort in is, I mean, it's like any salary job you have. You have to have the results, you have to get those projects done on time.
I, I, I think you're going to, you're going to generate a lot of data that means nothing.
So who's going to, who's going to generate it? The staff of the, of the council members?
Apparently, apparently the council members are, are going to keep notes on where they are and what they're doing. It's, it's sort of like billable hours or something like that. Well, I'm not sure that translates into good representation at all.
Not necess, there we go. It's not necessarily representation more so, it's just giving your constituents something to look at at the end of the month so that they know that you're doing what you said that you want.
You want them to look at something that means something, though. And so you've got seven people running around, well, six, six council members and the mayor making a lot of notes. So, well, I had coffee with five people, and it took a couple of hours, and we talked about a bunch of stuff, and about half of it was city stuff, so I'm going to make notes on that. I'm going to report that and all kinds of other things. So I went to Colorado Municipal League meeting down in Denver, order Grand Junction, and that took a lot of time, so I was driving, and I had to be gone for a couple of days, so there you go. I'm going to, I'm going to log those hours. What does that mean, does that tell a citizen in terms of the, whether they should vote for that person or not?
Yeah, the real question is, what is the problem that we're trying to solve? I think that's the issue, the fact that some people can't run. Well, lots of people can't run for a variety of reasons, right?
And when I started on city council, my kids were four and six, and I had lots of childcare challenges, but I worked it out. I know not everybody's able to do that. When I first started on city council, it took me twice as long to read my packets as it did at the end, because I knew much more. So as I served longer, I became more efficient and more skillful. And if I were accounting for my time like a bean counter, which is what I'm hearing you say, I would have really not been demonstrating to the citizens what I knew, but rather been accounting for time with coffees and constituents.
I mentioned this earlier, that if you look at the language, it doesn't, it doesn't explain what that accounting would look like. It's up to city council, following this amendment being passed, if it gets passed, it'll be up to city council to determine what that reporting looks like. And it's important that city council determine that, so it doesn't interfere with the job in the way that you guys are just now mentioning.
Okay, I think we have another question.
My name is Michael. The couple panellists have mentioned the question, what problem are we trying to solve? Over the years, the city has grown in geography as well as population, more people for each council member to represent more issues. We've created a URA, we've created a sustainability organization. And looking at recent police statistics over the last few years, murders are up 150%, rapes are up 48%, crime has been outpacing growth two to one.
What's your question, please?
Well, I'm bringing up, this is the problem we're trying to solve, right? So we have these problems in our communities. We have the time of day rates hurting working-class people, the water surcharge hurting HOAs. To both sides, do you see that full-time council would help solve these problems or help counsel that the issue so that there isn't the problem or the side effects coming up? And if not, I guess, what, what's the alternative? Is, is, do you not see any problems or issues as growth? Do you think we are functioning as a well-oiled machine? Thank you.
Okay, what, what would make a difference? Would a full-time council make a difference in dealing with these issues?
No, I don't think it would at all. What, it, it could backfire, what you could end up doing, and I, I started out on this line a little bit ago. You're going to end up with six people who are full-time, and if they do spend a lot more time on it and get some staff to help them, and they're going to want that, they're, they're going to compromise the structure of the council manager system as it exists now. And it may be time, it may be at some point in time, we, you want to scrap that system completely and go to a strong mayor system. But until, until you do that, I think that you're, you're inviting some trouble for the management of the city if you get six people who are basically full-time. They're going to spend a lot of time down here, and it's going to, it's going to create structural problems. So I, you know, if you're going to stick with the council manager system, jump the salary, double it, go to 20 grand, something like that. I, I can understand that there are financial pressures that come along with time pressures. But this, this is a big jump, and I think it's a jump in a direction that creates some structural, potential structural problems for the city.
Yeah, one of the things that I remember when I was on the council is that when we had issues, we took them to the city manager. We were not supposed to interfere with staff, that, that the city manager hired the staff, and we were supposed to not interfere with the staff other than get reports and maybe ask questions. So for, so for six or seven people to be running around interfering with staff seems to me that we're changing the form of government.
So, we're not going to change the form of government. I already talked about that earlier. This council manager situation is going to remain the same. And like you said earlier, you were talking about how you think that eventually we might, when we hit 350,000, switch over to a strong mayor system. What we're proposing is really an intermediary, intermediary step between coming from what we have now into a, a strong mayor system. I don't doubt that eventually we'll, we'll have a strong mayor system. Another thing to note about this is you're bringing up a lot of stuff like, we're going to have seven full-time people that are career politicians. I understand the concern. However, this, this can be undone just as quickly as it can be done. If you want to call it a, a pilot program, you can call it a pilot program. But, yeah, it can be undone with a, with a council vote.
I still don't think we've identified the real problem with outcomes. I don't, I don't know if we have poor outcomes by the city council today. That's the question.
I think whether, one, one thing they're saying that, that I can appreciate, and that is that there may be a slice of the population that is de facto ineligible to run for financial purposes. And, and, and that's a reasonable thing to worry about. But to fix it by making a leap like this with the potential modifications in the way that's, this council manager system operates, I, I just think that, that's just too much of a leap. Generate a, well, I don't know, enough.
I do, I do want to reiterate that that wouldn't change, that it's still the policy that city manager interacts with staff and that city council gives city manager direction. That's not going to change, we're not asking for that to change. We're really asking for a higher-functioning city council. And it's not to say that we have a poor city council, but why can't we make improvements? Why can't we ask for more, even if it is not...
But what does higher mean?
I want to see a city council that is doing more of the research, spending more of the time looking into budget offers, really considering whether we need all of the programs the city is currently running. If we, if, if everything that's running at the city is running as well as it could. At the end of the day, putting more time into this is going to result in a better municipal government.
You just described the problem that you're going to create with this.
I want to ask you, because when you, you served as mayor, and when you served as mayor, did it ever feel like, I mean, when you were serving as mayor, if you had more time to consider an issue, do you think that you would have made a better decision on that issue? Could you think back on a few issues where you were time constrained and your research, your, your resources were constrained? Do you think that you would have been able to make a better decision had you had more time?
No. I think that time and money were not the problem. There were other pressures that were considerable. And I actually, this is a big worry, that if you are doing this because it's your job and you want to keep your job, sometimes you make decisions that are not what you know in your heart are the best for the community, but because you want to please people to keep your job. And that's what I think we like least about our elected partisan politicians, who seem to work more for the lobbyists. I mean, and I can imagine a scenario where we have full-time council members, that the political parties, the lobbyists will start to show up to keep their people in office because they'll be able to push them toward their research. It's a fundamental change, and believe me, I've been there and I've seen that work. That's the bigger problem that I encountered, not the problem of not having enough time. The staff in Fort Collins is so skillful. It wasn't for lack of research on their part. And the way I spent my time, I got better as time went by. And I wasn't great, I'll admit, at the beginning. And some of the folks who might be elected under your system will start out very green in spite of the big pay. They'll still have a big learning curve, because it's not, it's, it's a tough position. And pay isn't what's going to make the difference.
So it's not pay, we're not, we're not paying people more for the job that they're doing now. We're, we're asking for, we're demanding more from our, from our elected officials, and we're really asking more from the citizens of Fort Collins to, to make better, to... more from the citizens of Fort Collins to make better, to be more involved, and have a stronger citizen base, to be able to select candidates that fit.
And you don't think that the lobbyists, and like, I mean, we currently pay our county commissioners pretty well, they're partisan, and they do, some people take county jobs, elected jobs, for the pay. I can't see us preferring a system where people select to run for office because it's a job.
I don't see how people are going to be running for office for this pay. It takes a lot to win a campaign, especially if the scenario they're proposing, that many people will be wanting to do this for the pay, we would have inherently more competitive elections, and I don't see how somebody would go through the effort of campaigning for months and winning an election for an average income in Fort Collins. Inherently, at the AMI, half the people who will be running will be taking a pay cut in the first place. I don't see how people will be doing it for sixty K a year, that no one, like you mentioned people going to county commissioner for the pay, that's twice as much as this, you gotta remember that.
Okay, do we have any more questions from the audience? Yes, someone in the front?
Thank you, thank you all for being here tonight. My name's Fred Kirsch, and as I understand the city council, city employee, city manager role right now, council, according to the charter, has the power, and I would say the responsibility, to meet with city staff and question city staff. Audit might be a strong word, but audit is definitely something that's within the charter's abilities. They're supposed to talk with the staff, find out what's going on, and direct the city manager what to do to make things happen. That's the way that I think the charter reads. How would this affect that relationship? I've heard from city staff members that one of their biggest complaints is not having enough time with city council. The way that it works is that staff members are not allowed to go reach out to city council members, the city council members are allowed to, and are supposed to be reaching out to the staff members. How would this impact that relationship, and would it help with the complaint that staff members have of not hearing enough from council members?
So she mentioned earlier that we have a great city staff that produces great research, and I would agree, but research is useless if we don't have a staff that can interact, we don't have a council that would interact well enough with staff to understand that research. There's no point in making great research if it's not going to be applied in the decision-making.
Of course it is.
If it's not going to be applied?
It is applied. What do you think the nine hundred pages are?
I know, I'm asking for a situation where we would have the ability to go through those nine hundred pages. You go to any city council meeting, and you can see that they don't read the full packets. We're stuck on page three, and we want a council that can...
That isn't the city council I knew, but anyway, I don't know about Susan's experience.
I just think that the problem that you've identified is not solved by paying people a lot. I do think that there are some ways to reduce pressures, and I agree with John about an incremental increase to put us more in line with some of our neighboring communities, but I certainly don't see the need for a full-time city council, spending all day here at city hall. We've got excellent staff. I mean, the way in which men and women behave is that they think they should be doing something, and so the interference with the council manager form of government is a very likely outcome.
Okay, we have to do final comments, we have six minutes left. We'll start with Dakota.
We haven't really put together a final comment yet.
Well, I think that you just need to tell us why we need to vote for it, and the others will say why we need to vote against it.
All right, so there's a few reasons why we need to vote for this. The first is that, like I said earlier, the current pay structure is inherently discriminatory against many different people in town, some people just can't run for council, and that's a problem. If we want a representative system, especially at this very, very lowest level of democracy, it should be truly representative, and right now, like we talked about earlier, there's nobody on council that is below the AMI, and there's nobody on council that is a renter. Also, this amendment is designed to draw in better qualified candidates, compensating at a fair wage for council will open up more opportunities for talent in the private sector to take time off from work and apply those resource, and apply their professional skills to city council.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. John?
I would recommend voting against it, I mean, I don't live in the city, so I can't vote one way or another on it.
Well, as a political scientist...
Yeah, if you want to change the system, then change the system, but don't make changes within this system that are likely to make the council manager system muddied up, dysfunctional, you're gonna have more people with more incentive and more time on their hands to get involved in administrative matters beyond the policy side of it. And when they get involved in administrative matters, they're gonna be communicating more with the city staff, that is not gonna be funneled all the time through the city manager's office, and so you're going to compromise the line, the chain of command, excuse me, the chain of command, if you will. If you want to do that, do that, but then get rid of the city manager system.
Okay, Claire?
Thank you. I really want to reiterate, I don't think we focused on this enough, the opportunity in the private sector that we're currently missing out on, and the fact that benefits aren't currently offered. I mean, imagining a family, you get to support your kids, they have healthcare with your current job, and then just to leave that, pay cut is one thing, but benefits are a really important thing to lose. I really want voters to consider whether or not they feel like their interests are being represented on our council today, whatever that looks like, and I just think it's important that everybody has the opportunity, and it's really important to consider that they still have to run, they still have to be the best man for the job, best woman for the job, and at the end of the day, I think the voters have the ability to do that and make the right decision.
Susan?
Well, thanks very much for having this panel. I urge people to vote no on this proposal. I think that there, we lack evidence that the council is not functioning well, or that people are not running for office because of the structure of our current system. There's very little evidence that suggests that strong mayor forms of government are any more effective, in fact, there's lots of evidence to suggest that they are less effective, and so I would urge people to reject this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to our studio audience, and our viewing audience, and to our panelists, I really appreciate your intensity on this issue. We hope that you will encourage others to watch this and other cross-currents programs, they are available at the League of Women Voters website, and Fort Collins TV channels, number fourteen and eight eighty-one. They are also available on YouTube. You can search the city of Fort Collins at FCGov.com, and look for a link for YouTube. Thank you again for everyone who tuned in, and for our participants.